Good evening and welcome to the Marlington Local School District Board of Education meeting on Thursday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Josh Hagan, here. Karen Humphries?
Here.
Kathy Crebko?
Here.
Mark Ryan?
Here.
Jonathan Swift?
Here.
Reading of the mission statement. In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student. Additions or corrections to the meeting agenda? Are there any additions or corrections?
We have one correction tonight. Under Section D, new business, I would like to remove item number three, Dare Officer Agreement for the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six school year from the agenda.
Noted. Okay, is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Crebko?
Yes.
Special presentation?
Okay, good evening. Welcome to our November board meeting. We're going to start off with our special presentations with our high school students. So we're going to have Mr. Farrell come up and honor our Elks Students of the Month.
Thank you, Mr. Swisher. Okay, so I do have the honor of introducing three of our high school students, Elks Teens of the Month. I only see two here tonight. But when I call your name, if you would, please come up, stand here while I read a short bio of you and get a picture afterwards. So who was our September Elk of the Month who would have been honored in October but was not here? First one up is Quinn Cernansky. Quinn is the daughter of Ryan and Kim Cernansky. She is a member of National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Student Council, the Drama Dukes, Character Counts Club, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and the Sources of Strength. Quinn is a two thousand and twenty-five Buckeye Girls State Delegate, a Duke Pound Leader, and a Duke Crew Leader. She is a multi-sport athlete earning varsity letters in cross-country, cheerleading, track, and soccer. Quinn is a member of Regina Chaley Church where she's volunteered distributing Thanksgiving baskets, wrapping Christmas presents, and making root beer floats at Days in the Park and ushering at the Stark County Fair. In her free time, Quinn enjoys soccer and running. After graduation, she plans to continue her academic and athletic career in college studying business. Quinn is an exceptional student leader, according to our staff, whose involvement in numerous honor societies, student organizations, and athletics demonstrates her unmatched work ethic and commitment to excellence both in and out of the classroom. Whether she's leading as a Duke Pound or a Duke Crew Leader, excelling as a multi-sport varsity athlete, or serving her community through her church, Quinn consistently sets a powerful example of integrity, service, and leadership. With her drive, compassion, and strong sense of purpose, there's no doubt Quinn will thrive as she continues her academic and athletic journey in college studying business. Congratulations, Quinn.
Thank you.
Our next student of the month is Addison Wittonsalder. Addison is the daughter of Jason and Amy Wittonsalder. She is a member of the National Honor Society, an executive member of Character Counts Club, the Sources of Strength, and a Duke Crew Leader. Addison is a multi-sport athlete earning varsity letters in basketball and track and field. She is also a member of the Flag Football Team here at Marlington. Following graduation, Addison plans to continue her academic career at Baldwin Wallace University to pursue a degree in sports management. Our staff describes Addison as a dedicated and well-rounded student who leads by example both in and out of the classroom. As a member of the National Honor Society and an executive leader of several clubs, she consistently demonstrates integrity, teamwork, and compassion. Her commitment extends to athletics where she excels as a multi-sport athlete, and she is known for her strong work ethic and incredibly positive attitude as she is sure to be successful at the next level. Congratulations, Addison. Mr. Swisher, if it's okay with you, we can invite the one student of the month that's not here back next month?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That is all for me then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we're about to begin the formal part of the meeting, so if you wish to stay for that, you can. If not, this would be a time for you that you could exit.
Invocation, Mr. Ross?
Okay, let's pray. Dear Lord, we pray that you will bless the board tonight in their decision-making, that this district itself might be blessed, especially the children and young adults who go here. We pray for your hand of protection to be over the district as well, to keep the kids safe, and ensure that your will be done. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to our November board meeting. I am Mr. Swisher, Superintendent of Marlington Local Schools. Again, November, December, we're just going to talk about some things to celebrate here, the things to celebrate here at Marlington in the fall season, and just some things we're going to be looking forward to here and coming into the new year. So I'm just going to highlight some of our Students of the Month, our PBIS Recognition Award, which we just got yesterday, some Fall Fine Arts and Sports, our Title Night, Million Sheets, Field of Flags, Bus Donations, across the board there. So we did have, obviously, our middle school Students of the Month. We do want to honor our October and our November. So our October Students of the Month at the middle school were Fallon Fetcher and Brantley Miller. And as you guys know, our middle school and our elementaries do quite a bit of different things for those kids, you know, within the school building for that honor. But we also want to bring them up at the board meeting for recognition. Also at the middle school for our November Students of the Month, because we did not honor them last, the Octobers last month, we have four this month, is Abigail Davis and Cy Stevenson. So congratulations to both of, all four of them. Our Kiwanis Fifth Grade Students of the Month for October, obviously at Lexington, we have Elia Fletcher and Dante Silva and Faith Boyce. So that's our, for Marlboro and Washington and Lexington. So congratulations to our Kiwanis Students of the Month. And then Kiwanis obviously makes a trip to each of the elementary buildings and actually pulls the kids out and gives them something while they're there, which is nice. For our Kiwanis Fifth Grade Students of the Month for the month of November, at Lexington, we have Peyton McAvain, and at Marlboro, we have Ben Stewart, and at Washington, we have Maddie Frank. So congratulations to those three for our Kiwanis Students of the Month for November. We talk about our PBIS. So that's our Positive Behavior Intervention Support. Just so, it's never happened, so I'm just excited to share that all five of our Marlington school buildings have been recognized by the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce for their implementation of the Positive Behavioral Intervention Support, which is PBIS. Basically, what this does is celebrate schools that create a safe, positive, supportive learning environment so they can grow academically and socially. So like, so there's basically bronze, silver, and gold. So at Lexington, they were the silver award this year. Marlboro was a gold award. Washington was a gold award. The middle school was a silver award, and Marlington High School was a silver award. It's the first time that all five of our buildings have earned this recognition all within the same year. We've had individual buildings, but we've never had all five. This kind of stems back to the whole DLT, so we have like goals. So one of our goals, obviously, our goal group three is, deals directly with PBIS and how to support our kids and how to support the needs of the whole child from a behavior, social, emotional, and so forth. So it just reflects the fact that they've been very intentional in what they do, because there's a lot of data that has to go behind that for support. We also have the State Support Team Nine that's given us training, and so we're good. So just a big thank you to our staff, because really, it's not an admin thing. This strictly boils down to staff for completing the application, doing the documentation, and then obviously the state comes in and does a review. That's how that's got to work within the building. So I do want to thank our building teams, and it just goes back to the very intentional work. And, you know, again, I'm going to say thank you to Renee. You know, I mean, she leads the DLT. All our admin sits on the DLT, and we have staff members from all buildings that sit on it once a month. I mean, it's a very large group, but that's what drives our district. All right? They drive it. So it's very shared leadership from that aspect, and that's what's done. So I do want to say thank you. That is quite a good honor. I better speak up, make sure everybody can hear me. Please, Mark. All right. Let's talk about just some, just some of our fall athletes. I kind of just took pictures, or pictures were given to me. We just, we had a good, really good fall season in general. So I, you know, I, all our athletes had a great season, but some just went, you know, there was just some that were just, they just went a little bit above and beyond, which was great. So obviously, there was a first-team EBC banquet right there. These were all Marlington kids. These are all our first-team EBC athletes with all our fall sports. So they do get honored for a dinner, so they were able to do that the other night. So we just had that up there. Our Marlington High School, our Marlington High School Girls Volleyball Team, you know, there's, again, a continued program of success built by our coaches, our parents, our community. So, you know, three years ago, we get to the state final four. A year ago, we make it to the state final four, and we make it to the state championship. We continue to lose seniors that are developing and leading our team, and they're continuing to have young players step up and lead our team. And again, we make it back to the state final four again, back down in Dayton. So this was some pictures of them down in Dayton. They did lose to Buckeye Valley, but it was, it was excellent and a very great game. We had a huge student section. We had three full buses of students plus parents that were down there. That was just the student section. That's not the parent section, but, you know, people all the time, they say, is it really important to have your students there? And it is, because the other teams do the same, and it makes a big difference for our kids. In a venue, if you look at the middle picture of how large Dayton's venue is, we can't fill it. No one's going to fill it. But it's just, it's good to have that support there. Our high school girls cross-country team, again, they had an excellent season. So their team qualified for, out of regionals. They got out of districts. They got out of regionals, and they ended up getting down to state as a team. Ireland Johnson, there in the center, won the state championship. She's our first girl that's ever won the cross-country state championship. So she's all by herself. Like, I think she's the first girl that's won it in first place. So she ran about three point two miles in about eighteen minutes, ten seconds, I think was where that's at. So it's just an excellent time. Nothing that I'm going to do or anybody sitting at this table, I'm pretty sure. So we're pretty safe there. So the girls, the girls ran well. In regionals, I think they ended up placing third. And I'm not exactly sure where they were at total, as in from the state aspect, but it was, it was a good run for them. And this team is only getting stronger. And our middle school program, boys and girls, I think both went to the middle school cross-country, state, and placed first. So our boys and girls programs coming up, both one state this year. So there's, there's a lot of talent on our girls and boys side from the cross coming up. Our high school boys cross-country team, I just threw a picture up there of them. I mean, they had a great season. They did get out of districts, which was hard enough because they're on a different division. They're in a higher division than our girls based on numbers. They did not get out of regionals at all. If they were in the, we missed our division cut by two kids. So they do it by the number of boys, so we were the smallest of Division Two. Based on their times, at least two of them would have gone to state if not three, if they were in the correct division. So we're hoping for that division change as we look at numbers moving forward. Golf. Our golf team's had a good thing. I just want to, I just kind of took a couple pictures of our two golfers of the year, which was Ben Warner and Madeline Mish. Ben was also EBC Player of the Year, so just some stats and highlights from them through their golf season and that app. Tennis. Again, I just, I just put a couple pictures up of our first-team tennis players, which was Amber McCarty and Laney Cross. Our high school boys soccer. They had, you know, our soccer program from the boys' aspect extremely strong. Originally, a lot of these highlights, I just kind of put in because they were at the regional or state. So this is a, this was a picture in Ravenna where they, they lost in the regional final two to one to CVCA. So they had a great chance there. I was, you know, at that game, if it wasn't for, I would say, a really fluke goal that doesn't happen very often, that probably would have gone into overtime, and I'll take our chances in overtime versus anybody in the state. I mean, just to get to the regional final, we went into overtime in the regional semifinal game and the district final game, which basically is triple overtime, and it comes to, it comes to kicks at the goalie. So they just did a good job. Our cheerleaders did also make it to state last weekend for the Best in State. Let me make sure I say that right, because sometimes I say things wrong. They did go the OHS, O-H, O-HSCA Best in State Championship, which was down in Columbus at Upper Arlington. There's quite a few teams in that. They ended up fourth place, but that's early in their season. So they just got, you know, they kind of had to get an invite to get there and then go from there. So there's two teams I left off here, which is girls soccer and football, which I'm still waiting on some picks and highlights, so those are going to come next month. So it's just, I wanted to make sure I had some decent picks and highlights for both. Our band. So our band also, this year, made it to state. They qualified down at New Philly. They did go to the state marching finals in Medina. Obviously, their show was based in Alice in Wonderland, so if you've attended any of our football games within the last, you know, seven weeks of the season, you would have been able to see some of their performance out there during the halftime. They did do, there's a lot of excellent individual performances that happened with that, and then they did get an overall rating of excellence. So we do want to, you know, that's, that's good for our band program to make it to state. It's always, always a goal for them to get there. We just want to see that program continue to grow and get better, and that's what we're going to, we're continuing to look forward to. Okay, we always, every year, we do Title Night. So we started last year bringing to three elementaries together in the Mullen Center. So we did have this last month. So we did have our reading and math kind of Title Night. There's just some pictures of, our staff runs that and our title tutors. Then we have kids and families come in, and they basically rotate stations from there, doing different types of learning activities that deal directly into reading or math. So I do appreciate the staff and the students for putting that together. Some more pictures. Like I said, there's just a ton of tables that wrap all around at least half the Mullen Center. So last year, I would say my four years were fifty percent. So there is a contest that you basically, you apply for and you try to get your community to vote for. It's called the One Million Sheets from our, from the local credit union. So two of the four years, we've won it, and that means you win a million sheets of paper, which is a significant amount of paper. We did come in second this year. Two other years, we've come in second, which is still, we had two hundred and fifty thousand sheets of paper that were delivered to, to the school. Now, we always choose Marlington Middle School. It really goes to all our buildings, because if we try to pin our buildings against each other, we have no chance of winning. So we just basically promote everybody to vote for the middle school, which then that paper then gets distributed throughout the district. We do appreciate the fact that we got second there. Okay, bus donations. So on that aspect, we have buses, obviously, that over time we need to scrap. All right? And this is not a bus accident. All right? This was, talking with Tom, talking with, when I met with the three fire chiefs about a year ago, they said it would be great if you could donate any of your buses. You will give it back to you to be able to sell for scrap that week goes back into us, but we'd like to use it for training exercises. So we were able to give a bus or two for, to Marlboro, Washington, Lexington, and they brought in Damascus, Seabream, Homeworth. There was multitude of fire departments that kind of had a training day of how, of what would happen if, you know, a bus was this way, or a bus got tipped. How could you get people out? What's the safest place to go in? So that, that's one of the things. And then we also had the Mahoning County Career Institute. They have a diesel mechanic program out there. They called, so we were able to donate a bus to them this past week out there for them to basically take apart one of our buses, the diesel engine, try to put that back, they'll end up giving that bus back, and we can scrap it. But for now, we're just, as, we have a big fleet. We do update our fleet with a bus a year as we take a bus off the road, and then we get it signed off through the Ohio State Patrol. If, if we don't scrap it, but in this case, this year, we were able, we had some, we held back to be able to, for donations to either the fire department or, and/or the career tech programming on that. I do want to thank them for allowing us to do that. So I thank the board for letting them do that. Field of Flags. So if you didn't see out front of the high school, the high school kind of ran a field of flags for the Disabled American Veterans, the DAV. Their goal was to raise a thousand dollars. They did a little over that. They did about one thousand sixty five dollars to honor our veterans, and then gave that check to the DAV. So those would have been the flags that you saw out front, that you were able to, I think, for a dollar or two dollars is what it was, you know, make a donation, and then they would obviously put a flag in it in honor of maybe a fallen veteran, you know, during that time. So that was nice that we had that set up for Veterans Day this past week. The now, where we're going. So right now, I'm in the process of just getting some summer project bids. My goal is to have a work session in January with the board to look at options that you guys want to do this summer. Like I said, so we're, I'm just kind of putting that together. And the law has changed on how we get bids, so it's, we're getting some bids, but at the same time, then we may have to do, the reason why we're pushing it back, we have to do something a little more formal. So basically, now everything from, if it reaches a certain price tag, it used to be like paving or anything that wasn't tied to a building. The kids, where instruction happened, you could get bids based on your policy, like one, two, three bids, and then you're able to have a board approval. Now they basically say that anything that the district owns, once it reaches a specific threshold financially, which is basically anything probably over seventy-five thousand dollars, you need to go through the very formal bidding process with the attorneys and using RFPs and this and that. So that was all part of the legislation's House bill. They said it makes, that's the way they want it. So that just basically means that it's a little bit more, I don't want to say red tape, it just takes a little bit more time to go through that process. So we're working through that. We do have classified negotiations this year in the spring, so we are going to be, start discussing that with our, our classified. That's going to have to open up here, so that's going to be a, we'll see how, we're going to work through that. And then obviously, this is concert season right now. I mean, so if you guys get a chance, I'll be sending an email between the elementary concerts that all happen at our high school now, Marlboro, Lexington, and concerts that all happen at our high school now, uh, Marlboro, Lexington, and Washington, then obviously our middle school and high school concerts, plus our choir concerts, plus our band Christmas concerts. We're probably looking at anywhere two, four, six, seven, eight, I think there's nine concerts in the next six weeks, um, that'll be happening in our auditorium. So if you get a chance, um, those shows are really good. Probably one of my most favorite time of the year is to go listen to our choir and our band and watch our elementaries do performances, if you get a chance, so. That's really all I got, unless you have any questions for me right now?
Okay.
Great things happening.
Awesome. Public participation, did anyone sign up to speak? Mr. Foss?
Yes, Adam Mitchell would like to address the board regarding additional space, uh, related to the wrestling program. Adam, if you could just come up to the podium and, uh, try to keep it within three minutes, please.
Timer. Timer.
You got it, let me do it.
I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Adam Mitchell. Um, I've been the, I've been a youth, uh, wrestling coach, uh, here at Marlington for 12 years now, um, nine of which I've been the head coach. And when I took the program over, uh, we had right around 28 kids in the youth program, and that ranged from around first grade to sixth grade. Uh, since then, we have nearly 80 kids, um, from first grade to sixth grade. Um, last year, our Marlington Youth Wrestling Program, uh, won the Division Two State Championship, and that is the true state championship, um, covers the entire state, any Division Two school. And I believe that there was a little over 200 schools that participated in that tournament. So, pretty impressive, because a lot of Division Two schools that are in that are also private schools that recruit kids specific for sports. So, um, we just, we have a very large, talented group of kids, uh, that are coming up through the program and now moving into, or starting to move into, the middle school program. Um, and with that, we have some serious space issues at every level of, of each of those We basically have now high school boys and girls, uh, which is relatively new. The same thing applies to the middle school, boys and girls program, um, and then especially at the youth, uh, level. Uh, currently, within the district, we have one designated wrestling room, um, that is designed for around 24, uh, kids. We currently have over 120 kids participating, um, in the wrestling sport from K through The high school boys and girls cannot drill together in that space. It's just one, not safe. So at this current time, the girls are then forced to, um, practice in the cafeteria. But then we also have concerns with sharing space, uh, with the gamers club, the 222 club and detentions. There's a lot of other things, activity-
You have 30 seconds.
Happen in that. So anyway, the, we have, we also have around 25 kids that are paying to practice at Mount Union, um, just to create some additional some space so we can share that, that facility. So my simple request tonight is just consideration, conversation on additional permanent space options for us. We have a problem at the high school, middle school-
Your time is-
-level now, and it's only gonna get worse with the amount of youth kids that we have, uh, that are gonna be coming up through the program. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we gonna address this at some point?
Okay, hold on.
What's going on?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, old business?
Okay, old business.
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Any other? Can we have contact information if we, after reading this and if we have questions, or do you want us to go ask questions through you?
Bob, Bob has the contact information on the card.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, first item of old business is recommend the board to approve the following resolutions from volume 44, number one, August 2025, and volume 44, number one, which was our special update from March 2025. So these were the policies, um, that was reviewed last month.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Okay, on our old business, also number two is rescind policies. Recommend the board to rescind the following policies.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Okay, so I asked Dad about this. So basically, these policies were approved, now they're gonna be rescinded, because this is the way the law works. So, you know, he said, this is what he said, he said, "Dan." He said, "The rescinding nondiscrimination policies are being consolidated into three replacement policies as an effort to consolidate the policy manual. While there are no changes in discrimination regulations, we are offering a way to streamline our policy manual by reducing six policies into three." You are not, you are not moving forward with the three replacement policies, 1422, 3122, and 4122. Then you should not rescind the six policies. I hope this helps clarify. So basically, what he's doing is he's just said, "We're, we're rescinding these policies 'cause it's shrinking it down to smaller policies."
And just on a side note, every time the state legislator basically meets now, we're gonna have changes to policy, there are updates, changes, these kind of rescinded things, because, to be honest, they keep changing their mind in Columbus. It's not consistent from last year to this year.
Correct, which is why you guys will have additional, new policies to review the next 30 days as a review and new business, because, um, every time the legislators meet, they make an adjustment to a House bill, which requires a policy change.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Executive session, is there a motion for the board to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the purchase of property for school district purposes pursuant to revise Code 121.22G2?
So moved.
So that was Swift with the motion, and second was who?
Mr. Hagan.
Gosh, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Time in is 6:33.
Okay, we're out at 6:44 PM, executive session. New business.
New business, we have two items for new business tonight. Item number one, recommend the board just to review the following resolutions from special update transportation supplement, October 2025, Ohio, volume forty-three, number two.
Don't move, oh, go ahead.
There's no, there's no vote.
There's no vote, that's right.
Oh, we're just reviewing them.
Just, you just need to review, so, talking with Ed Holland, he just basically called, Nicole and I, and said, can you please make sure these are on for first read, I gave it inside your packet, a Ohio, the, uh, it's called a transportation supplement, um, these are all just law, um, basically, it talks about drug and alcohol testing of all employees, it used to be just drivers, now we're adding van drivers, I mean, it's basically the gist behind that, or just basically, anybody that coach, anybody that coaches or drives a student is subject now to the drug and alcohol testing policy. And it, it used to be with a CDL, like, as a bus driver myself, as a CDL, you know, if you were caught drinking and driving, you had, I think it's for a standard person, without a CDL, it's point oh eight, with some of the CDL, I think it's point oh four, point oh six, basically, now the law just basically said there is no excuse at all.
Love it.
At the end of the day, if you're, if there's point anything, you're, you're gonna end up paying the consequence, yes. Uh, obviously, the last one is, is, the other ones are just about transportation of students, alternative vehicle, driver certification, um, transportation by alternative vehicles, and then their, uh, food, food is allowed, you're allowed to have food while you transport kids, so, that must have been an issue, so. So, take a look at this, you have, uh, next thirty days, please, reach out, um, and let me know if you have concerns, or anything that we need to take off or on, or you want to discuss that, that's, um, we can loop Ed in, or if I don't, if I don't know the answer. Okay. So, the only new business that we need to vote on tonight is recommend the motion to approve the following out-of-country field trip as is shown in exhibit A, uh, Spanish students to Ecuador.
Some of them.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, in your packet, I kinda gave you, it says, school board presentation, two thousand twenty-five, so, really, this is just a, a formality of, they, they, they run the program like they always do, we've done out-of-state field trips, we haven't done it since two thousand twenty-two, for a foreign language, it's very common in most high schools, it's just, now that we're bringing it back, the Spanish department came to me and asked, hey, can we bring this back, and present it and give it to our students, and I said, well, I would like to give it to the board first, for their blessing, um, and then we'll go from there, so, none of this money or anything's funneling through Marlington's stuff, it all runs through the program, uh, when Bob and I reviewed it and looked at policy, our main thing was making sure that, uh, it was the right program, which is they use Explore, uh, Explorica, and obviously, the fact that they had to be very strict criteria about chaperones, I think it's one to six, male, female, things like that, that goes from there, so, this may or may not go anywhere, depends if any students want to go or not, but I wanted to make, wanted the board to, uh, at least have a chance to discuss it.
Estimate on cost per kid.
Right here.
Thirty-four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
So, this would be something that, she sent me an email.
On this particular trip.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, there is a trip change, she said, just sent it to me tonight, she said, trip change is gonna be June fifteenth to June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-seven.
Okay.
This is not for this summer, this is how far in advance, due to the cost and the process behind it, so, this isn't something that she's saying, hey, can I get approval now, let me go talk to students tomorrow, and then hopefully, they can come up with that, no, this is for two thousand and twenty-seven, um, she has led, she said, two trips, for, uh, and organized three pre-COVID before coming to Marlington, uh, Mrs. McAllister took over the trip that Mrs. Phillips organized pre-COVID, uh, Megan, uh, before, has gone to Costa Rica, two thousand twenty-two was Shelly, that was the last time we did, um, a, a trip with our foreign language, and we took students, I guess, to Peru, uh, before too, so.
We just go to France.
I don't think France is on the option, but yes, they used to.
I went to France.
I didn't go, it was too expensive.
It was great.
They sent, they left you there, didn't they?
Yeah, they did, for a year, till they figured out I was missing.
So, if you guys are, if you guys are good with that, this is just approving them to go ahead and at least.
Put it out there.
Put it out there, and see if we have any students that would be interested in this program.
Obviously, parents have to sign off.
Yes, this all goes through parents, the insurance, and this is all through the parents, but, I don't feel comfortable her announcing this in class, or being brought up at the high school level for our Spanish, uh, students, uh, that choose to go, or any of our foreign language students to go, without having, uh, the board being okay with it.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Treasurer's agenda.
Okay, I'd like to recommend that the board approve the minutes from the October eighth work session, and the October ninth regular board meeting.
Some move.
Second.
Did we skip over?
No, that was.
Oh, that was removed.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Mr. Swift, and?
Okay. Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the board approve the financial reports for the period ending October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, as shown in exhibits E to G.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion.
I'll share a couple brief highlights. Uh, we, we ended the month of October with a balance of ten million, eight hundred thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents, of which, the general fund has a balance of nine million, ten thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. The permanent improvement fund ended the month with two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and two cents in it, and the capital projects fund has a balance of seven hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars in it in cash, but after encumbrances, that one, I think I mentioned last month, too, is down to a small balance, eighty-three dollars and twenty-one cents, and that remaining part that's there is the, um, payment for the, uh, building improvements, the bond issued that we have, and some good news about that is that we only have four more payments to make on that, and they're about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, twice a year, so, um.
Two more years.
Two more years of that.
Bob, is there anything big coming in, do we have any nexus payments, or, uh, we've collected all of our tax payments for the year, correct?
Uh, no, we will have, um, really, the second half of the property taxes will come in the spring, including the nexus proceeds.
But, I mean, before the end of this calendar year?
Oh, before the end of the calendar year, no, that, that's all received, I see what you mean.
That's about that, thank you. What are the times you make those, uh, those lease payments, are they March, April?
Um, actually, one's, uh, in December, early December, and then I think the other one might be in January, shortly thereafter, but, um.
That close again?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, if I remember right, I know the ones coming up, because they just emailed me, uh, just yesterday, about that, to remind me the December one was coming out.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the budget and revenue revisions as shown in exhibit each.
Some move. Second.
Okay, a couple highlights from that, um, November revisions, general fund, I'd like to increase it by fifty-five thousand dollars in purchase services, and that's twenty thousand for counseling, ten thousand for legal services, twenty-five thousand for special ed, um, also an increase of a hundred and seventy-five thousand there, uh, that will be used to increase the food services budget for the year.
Why the increase?
Um, well, if you look back at the one report we just went through, the financial summary, where I was reading off the totals, at this point in time in the year, food service has a cash balance of negative a hundred and one thousand dollars, so, this is, you have to budget to do a transfer from one fund to the other, so, I'm asking for a budget increase, a hundred and seventy-five thousand into the general fund, that it can be moved, if necessary, as the year progresses into food service. Remember, last year, too, we handled food service a little differently, we were on that, uh, C, CFP, CEP program, and this year, we're back on the old, normal way of being funded, but with the budget changes, too, there's a little bit of wait and see going on here, to see how much revenue we will have come in, so, it's not, I'm not a hundred percent sure yet, that we will need to do a transfer a year, but it's still conceivable. It looks like it right now, based on where the cash is at, because we didn't have much left at the end of last year, uh, but that's to basically give, you could say, the headroom in the budget, to be able to make that transfer, and, more technically, to be able to provide enough, enough budget in food service, that we, they can put in their purchase orders for food, so, it's kinda like, we have to say we have more revenue coming in, before we can increase the budget, can't do the POs unless you have the budget, and, uh, can't increase the budget unless we, uh, have a, a source of revenue coming in like that, so, it's kinda putting all the, uh, rose in effect, to make sure that we can, uh, keep that in the positive.
Is that all you had to share, I didn't know?
Oh, I guess there's a couple other little things here, oh, yeah, um. In the permanent improvement fund, have a couple increases there as well, um, seventy-five thousand dollars total, one was unplanned, um, and that was the replacement of the maintenance van that Rayo uses, um, it had, it's been in bad shape, and then the transmission went out, like, last month completely, and with the cost to replace that, uh, and the other issues going on with the van, it seemed like, uh, a priority to take care of that, so, um, that's to replace Rayo's van, and also, um, to purchase a snow removal machine, which will be something like, uh, um, a Steiner, or, uh, something like that, uh, you know, commercial kind of, uh, landscaping piece of equipment like that, probably with a brush on it, Nick Evanich, you know, he's been very good about finding grants, and he found one through, I believe this is a BWC grant, that will pay either half or most of that, I forget the exact amount, but this is, this is to put our share of that in here, there are grants, when they provide them, they're like, yes, we'll give you this money, but you have to provide your share of it, and this is, budget is to increase that, so, it's, so, it wasn't planned at the beginning of the year, but it's a good thing, so.
It's just a, years prior, it's been in foil, it's been, it's been, I don't know how many years, but it used to be, we had one that had a brush on it, because our middle school and high school campus, obviously, you know, they plow the parking lot, but no one touches our sidewalks, look, there, there's a lot of sidewalks.
Remember that, yeah.
So, uh, we're just trying to finally get a chance to replace that now, so, we've been trying to figure a way to do that, because our elementaries, they have a little bit less sidewalks, but they all have snow blowers, too, but this makes it, you know, with the amount of sidewalks we have between the high school and middle school, this will help with the main campus through the winter.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to recommend that the board approve the donations.
Some move.
Second.
I'll read it for you, Bob.
Thank you, Dan.
So, this is, uh, Marlboro Elementary's PTO, donation of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents for the Marlboro Playground Improvements, this project was made possible and generously donated, and generously is huge word there, from the following people, Lori and Steve Keller, Kurt and Katie Keller, Nicole and Shane Wagler, Ed and Barb Robertson, and the Joseph A. Jeffries family. Additional, additional donations would be Abigail Schroder, which would be fifty dollars for student assistance at Lexington, and Mr. Rickles, Tom Rickles, uh, three hundred dollars for our care closet.
Incredible donations, thank you so much to the community.
Thank you.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Hagan.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
It was the mister, it was the mister that got her.
Well, I, I seconded it, so, when you called Kathy.
Did I mess it up?
Yes. So, that's what got me.
You seen how complacent you were getting.
Oh, well, that's.
Okay, we all said yes.
Glad you mentioned it, because I, I wrote her down as second again, so, I.
We sound alike.
We do sound alike, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
Section F, our last section here, or, no, not our last section, section F personnel, if the board's okay, I will read through personnel, but do consent for one vote.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. We do have, uh, we have one tutor retirement, uh, this year, from Washington, that's Ms. Laura Ray, we have two classified retirements, Kirsten Kramer, a bus driver, and Colleen Koetsman, a bus aide, we have a classified resignation, that's Carrie Smith, a custodian, we have, uh, one certified staff hire, Claudia Gray is an intervention specialist, she's replacing our intervention specialist at Lexington, that's leaving in January, she's already, already accepted her retirement, we have a class, we have a, a couple classified staff hires, we have Ashley Tanner coming back as middle school secretary, we have Ramona Evans coming in as athletic, athletic secretary, Rhonda Farrell's a bus aide, and Sherry Hudson, um, has been finishing up doing some grounds that we needed to pay her for, she did, we have then our classified sub hires, certified sub hires, supplementals that continue in through the fall, and some in the spring, and one supplemental pay correction that we needed to split amongst two people.
Her motion?
I'll move.
Second. Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, just the announcements, upcoming events, obviously, the November twenty-sixth through December first is Thanksgiving, so, please enjoy that, spend some time with your family, December sixth, the first Saturday in December is obviously Frosty's Boutique, um, so, that is a, a large gathering, so, uh, you guys, you guys.
Where's that, in high school?
That, I, I think it was moved to the middle school.
Middle school?
I do think it's at the middle school, but, it used to be at the high school.
Ross is at the middle school.
Middle school?
Yes. Where's it at, the high school, I think it's at the high school.
It is?
Because I think you used to be at.
It's been in both.
From Lexington to the middle school and now I think.
It's been in both, so, I don't, it's not listed in front of me, so, I can't say for sure, so, okay.
Okay.
It's not at one, it's at the other.
You can't miss it.
Go where all the cars are.
Go where the cars are, so, you're right.
Yeah.
Do we need to talk about, uh, organization meeting, or you want to wait till December?
December, we'll get, we'll pick dates, I didn't even think about that, yeah, so, we'll kinda get your guys' opinion, when to do the organization in January, that fits everybody's schedule, if anybody's gonna be gone, or whatever, uh, December twenty-second through January second is obviously our winter break, at that time, if you, like I said, the concerts are biggie, so, we'll keep you updated on that, but.
Okay, the next Board of Education meeting will be December eleventh, at six PM, here in the high school DLZ, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Thank you, and good night.